Meeting of the Oregon City Commission for October 1st, 2014. Roll call please.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Mum?
Here.
Commissioner Pauli?
Here.
Commissioner Roth? Mayor Neely?
Here. You all please join me in the flag, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I've got a proclamation to read, and I will tell you that this proclamation is written by members of the city commission and not the staff. This is a resolution supporting passage of Measure 3447 on November 4th, 2014 ballot. Whereas Clackamas County has not made up for the jobs lost in the worst recession experienced since the Great Depression, and whereas it is critical for Clackamas County to have the training and educational capacity to meet the workforce demands of the present and future if we are to compete in the job market for family-based jobs, and whereas Clackamas Community College provides an affordable programs needed for skills and education required in the modern employment environment, but whereas Clackamas Community College's enrollment has increased 41 percent in the last 10 years and is now approximately 30,000 students, and whereas Clackamas Community College does not have sufficient classroom space to accommodate the growing student population, and whereas Clackamas Community College needs modern equipment and facilities to meet educational requirements of today's workplace, but whereas Clackamas County Board has placed Measure 3447 on the November 4th ballot for a $90 million bond to meet these classroom equipment and facility needs, and whereas the current rate of 19 cents per thousand of assessed property value from a previous bond passage will be maintained if Measure 3447 passes, resulting in no net increase in taxes resulting from passage of this bond measure, and whereas the city has unbilled industrial land zoned to the east and south of Clackamas Community College's main campus, and whereas the development of this land will likely be stimulated by the improvements created in this bond measure's passage to the benefit of Clackamas County's workforce, of Oregon City, and of Clackamas Community College itself, now therefore the Oregon City Commission resolves to encourage Clackamas County voters to vote yes on Measure 3447, and resolves to support Clackamas Community College in its effort to provide needed classroom space, modern equipment, and facilities where its students will be approved and adopted at this meeting today, and I'll be signing it later. We regard Clackamas Community College as being a tremendous partner here in Oregon City. We've been involved with them in many things, but their presence here has been extremely important for the economic development of Oregon City, but as the county at large. The emphasis of this resolution is directed to Oregon City, but the bond will actually improve the facilities at the Harmony Campus as well as the Wilsonville Campus, so it's not just for the Oregon City campus. With that...
Well, and could I make a comment here?
Absolutely.
And the mayor was very generous. He actually wrote this proclamation, which I support full-heartedly, and the reason why we did this is because staff was not allowed to... And David, can you maybe explain to the citizens why staff was not allowed to work on this?
Because it's already a ballot measure, so you cannot use city resources to promote or not promote a ballot measure. We have to remain neutral, and I don't think the proclamation is neutral.
Okay.
No, the proclamation is not neutral, but the commissioners themselves are not so bad.
Yeah, it's just staff. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that staff could not be involved in that for that reason. And the mayor did an awesome job. Thank you.
Thank you. With that...
Excuse me, Mayor. We also need a motion since it's a resolution that you wrote.
Oh, yes.
Move to approve proclamation.
Second.
To clear and support of the bond measure.
Moved by Commissioner Mum, seconded by Commissioner Pauli. How goes in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you. With that, I'm going to ask, I believe, Sandy Carter to come forward. Is that correct? And do you want to bring Peggy Siegler with you?
Yes.
This will be a Willamette Falls Locks Economic Potential Report. Thank you.
My name is Sandy Carter. I'm with the One Willamette River Coalition.
And I'm Peggy Siegler. I am the Oregon Field Officer for the National Trust for Historic Preservation. I live in rural Clackamas County.
I live in Westland. Do I have to give my address?
No.
No. And look, we liked your shirt.
And I'm bearing my shirt here, a little bit of advocacy. For those who may not be familiar, and I think everybody is pretty familiar on this panel, I still would like to give a really quick history that's behind this presentation. In 2005 and '06, Governor Koolongoski made the locks problem a Oregon Solutions project. And Oregon City was there at the table, supporting our work under the leadership of Vern Duncan to keep the locks maintained and operating. By 2010, the large group of stakeholders that was involved in that had chipped in over time to fund an engineering study of the locks, a study by Travel Oregon on the tourism return on investment for an open locks, a study of other cases where U.S. locks were transferred out of Corps of Engineers ownership, consultant work to refresh and update the locks nomination on the National Register where it joined other properties in 1974 when it was 101. And then through some really strong advocacy, we had obtained federal stimulus dollars to complete the gate inspections and repairs in 2008 and 2009. At that point, Oregon Solutions said that was a victory, and they had to go off and solve other problems in Oregon. The work of, the ongoing work of ensuring a healthy future for the locks shifted first to Clackamas County and then to the Willamette Falls Heritage Foundation, of which I am a board member. And I sort of became the new facilitator of the One Willamette River Coalition, which is what the Oregon Solutions large group transitioned to. So when you hear One Willamette River, it's the same as Oregon Solutions, only farther down in time. And Peggy Siegler was hired for a position as the Oregon Field Representative for the Trust about that time and got involved, and I want to tell her what happened in 2011 and '12.
All righty. About the same time the Trust developed a new program... First of all, the National Trust is a nonprofit. We've been around for 60 years, and we are DC-based. We have offices and representatives all over the country, and we work to help local entities with preservation needs, be it expertise, funding, identification, planning, whatever is needed nationwide. And about the same time that the locks were closed by the Corps of Engineers, which was November 2011, we had just started a new program called National Treasures, and the locks seemed like a really good fit for that program. So we put it through our pipeline, and we are now able to bring the treasure, I mean the Trust's toolkit to help this local resource. Because it's Corps of Engineer-owned, we are working with several core projects, and so this sort of adds to the bigger picture.
So the locks became a national treasure, and simultaneously that year it became one of Oregon's most endangered places by the, what was the Historic Preservation League, now Restore Oregon. Okay, so do you want to talk about what this wonderful partnership with you has brought to our pushing on the Corps?
A lot of what we have done is work with the Corps of Engineers. As a federal agency, they are required by the National Historic Preservation Act to take care of their historic properties, which they were not doing with the locks in particular. They also, when they make a, have an undertaking, do a change of condition, they are supposed to do a Section 106 analysis to see if adverse effects were caused. Through our pushing, we have gotten that process going. They have determined that there, yes, are in fact adverse effects by the closure, and so we are now in conversations of mitigation with them, and have had terrific support from the State Historic Preservation Office, from the Grand Ron Tribe, from the counties and jurisdictions that are involved. And we're trying to determine a mitigation that is on a par with the closure. At first, they were talking about memorializing kinds of things like a book or, I'm trying to think what the other... Anyway, we kind of have gotten them to realize that the only real good solution is to repair the locks and get them open again, and so now we're working towards that final outcome.
On a parallel track, Peggy and I started, we held a large public meeting with about 60 people here in Oregon City, in a beautiful historic house. 60 people crowded into a big room to talk about how to ensure a future for the locks, and the consensus was, and I'm pretty sure the mayor was there, consensus was that it is hopeless to leave the locks in the care and the ownership of the Corps of Engineers, and we should work towards transferring it, the transfer option. So my small locks advisory group, which is kind of like the executive committee of that stakeholders group, chipped in to support the commissioning of a study on the overall status of the locks, their economic potential, their importance, and their non-economic heritage value to the area, the region, and the state. And we are grateful to Oregon City for continuing to support us with a $500 contribution to the cost of that study. We wanted to present it tonight after we talk, so that nobody's distracted, and I know how this goes. So in a nutshell, this report dug into both one-on-one interviews with affected stakeholders up and down the river, and they mined the data that was available through the Corps and through businesses, although the Corps data was somewhat lacking, and they arrived at the conclusion that the major demand for the locks at this time is pent-up recreational And I think, just anecdotally, we probably all are aware of that, seeing all the kayakers out there and knowing about the Paddle Oregon and the Willamette River Water Trail, et cetera.
Yeah.
The study found that industrial users would need to see a stable track record of operations at the locks before they're likely to make the investments that will be needed again for them to resume shipping on the river, but that it's likely that they will because it's the greenest, most cost-effective option, and the railroads are full and the highways are full. But they would need to be operating for a while, presumably based initially on recreational demand for really multiple users to be visiting the locks again. We have studies to give out, and I think Peggy might want to mention something about our next step, which we've launched, which is full-on advocacy with the state legislature.
Or with whoever. We think we've really made a lot of headway in the past two and a half years. We've really brought this whole issue to a higher level, and we also, the Trust has also retained Congresswoman Houli and Lisa Nato as consultants to help us champion the future of the locks. Some of the things that they are doing are they're right now actively asking different local jurisdictions for resolutions, just saying, "We want the locks open." If we can get a portfolio of that backing from cities and counties and agencies up and down the river, then we think we can take it to the next level. They also have a bill submitted in the Senate to, I'm not going to get the wording right, to get a task force formed to look at the long future of the locks. So as a bill which potentially will or will not become reality.
And now you can bring out the beautiful book.
And share them.
So we have six, five of you and one for city manager right today, and we can certainly provide it in a digital electronic form format, but some people just like to have paper to fondle, and my pictures are in it, and they're just beautiful, so.
Of course they are.
You'll enjoy that.
Did you autograph these?
So I don't know...
Did you autograph your pictures?
No. They didn't even caption them. But I would like to, I don't know if we've taken our full 10 minutes, but we are available for any questions or anything that isn't clear from this presentation.
Couple of things. One, David Fraser, this is the person who received the money that I asked you to provide for this particular project. So now you've got a face to the organization. So...
We've met. We've met.
We'll get to it, Charlie.
The other thing, actually, Darlene Houli and Lisa Nato actually met with us earlier this week.
Yes.
Yeah, and I invited Carol Pauli. I would have normally invited Rocky Smith, but he's a real working stiff, and they were meeting. And I didn't want to pay him in school, so I invited Pauli. Both of these commissioners will still be here next year. The other three positions are actually up for election. So I wanted to make sure to have somebody that would be on the commission next year, and so we can have the appropriate follow for...
And we'd be happy to come back.
Yeah.
I'm sure.
If necessary.
And wear your fancy shirt.
Normally, I should have dressed up, but...
No, I like it. I like it.
You just triggered me on something, but I've lost it. So thank you very much for your...
Go ahead.
I just wanted to thank you both for all the work that you're doing. I think all of us, I shouldn't say that because I'm not sure, I think all of us are, you know, feel the same way about the locks. I hope they, I hope you all do, because I do, and I think it's one of those things where something that's that part, that's that much of a part of our community for so long, both communities, to see that end is really tragic, and to kind of say, "Well, a book or some sort of memorial to this thing is sufficient when we're on the verge of redeveloping this whole site," I think it's just ridiculous to even consider that. I think that with the, it's so great kind of actually that all these things are kind of happening at the same time, and I think that that gives us some leverage to really show how important it is with the Willamette Falls Heritage Area Coalition and the Wild Willamette Falls Legacy Project and the locks. It's all part of the same vision that we all share for that place, and to think that somehow, and we've had this discussion about how tourism doesn't play into the calculations of why the locks is important, and that's absolutely ridiculous, because when those, when the Oregon City side gets developed in the future, if something happens on the Westland side, those locks are going to be incredibly valuable in terms of getting people to that site, back and forth above the site to talk about the history of this community and Westland and the falls, and to let it go at this point when we're on the verge of seeing all this happen is just something that's really unthinkable. So I know we're all so busy, and we've all played, you know, parts in, at one time advocating for the locks, and I feel like I haven't done my part enough because we're so busy, but I think it's something that this community really needs to step up and really, really advocate for, because we're starting to talk about tourism and how to deal with tourism, how to deal with all these people that are going to be coming into Oregon City and Westland, and if we don't, if we let all these things fall apart that we've put so long, so many years to put together, and I feel the same like when we lost the trolleys, I mean, we built this infrastructure, and at the time that Oregon City is kind of becoming this attraction and those cities really, that we're losing some of this infrastructure that we spent so much time to build, and we can't let that happen.
I would agree myself with what Rocky said. We do need to support the locks, and I know Darlene Houli's a great champion. She knows how this works. And when you go to the other cities to ask for that resolution, ask them also if they could give you a little donation, because that will look good.
Not a little one.
That will, that will be helpful, and it will look good, I think, when Darlene Houli takes this further down to get the big locks.
Talking to us and asking for more than we've given you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I agree with all that, and thank you for your work, and I do think it is important for all the cities to realize this is important for the region.
Yeah.
Not just Oregon City. There is a lot of momentum going now with the Willamette Falls Legacy Project, and now is not the time to let this slip away.
That's right.
So we need to open those locks, and there's a lot of future and potential. It may look different than it did before as far as the use, but it's a new day, and it should live on.
I do want to correct what might be a misinterpretation. I've seen Lisa Nato in the background.
And Darlene.
Say hi. Is Darlene here too?
Yeah, Darlene's back there.
Stand over there. Yes, they are. I wanted to not leave the wrong impression. Everybody on the commission are working stiffs. It's just a few of us are more flexible stiffs than others.
Well, thanks for letting us all know we work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll be going into citizen comments for a moment, but I'd like to invite Jerry Herman forward, and he's going to talk to us about the rivers of life.
Hi, Jerry.
I thought you were going to sing for us, maybe. That's another night.
Mr. Mayor, councilors, thank you for giving us the opportunity. October 14th is about 13 days away, and that's the first time the Portland spirit is really coming to Oregon City to really stop and present the first of, we hope, 10 more evolutions in 2015. We want to just introduce the young people that are assistant guides. We call them discovery team members and a primary guide today, and let Dennis Corwin tell you a little bit about what we've been doing. We've invited a lot of people as VIP guests, but we also have a lot of paying people at this point for the October 14th cruise. Dennis, maybe you could just share a little bit.
Sure. The October 14th cruise actually is kind of a shakedown cruise. We historically don't do these, but this is a relatively complex process with a lot of moving parts, so we wanted to kind of get a jumpstart this season. It's also an opportunity to create some marketing materials with video production, which I believe Jerry has some this evening as well. We've already done some filming, but we're also going to film that day, so we can take those to the trade shows and stuff coming up here in January and February. But yeah, it should be an exciting day. Many of you might have gotten your invites. If you haven't, I have invites right here, but please see me.
This is not a simple proposition, and every time they leave the dock, it costs some hundreds and hundreds of dollars, thousands of dollars per hour. So we're trying to make sure that this will work in the future, because we pioneered the effort and worked out the flaws and details to make it successful. Also, you have a packet in front of you, which is showing you the key points of some tour guides. By the way, the person on the front is Oscar, and we think he needs to go away, the sea lion. But we, he is back, along with three of his friends already, and you'll probably have a chance to see them if you're on the river with us on October 14th. The October 14th cruise is 9:00 AM roughly until 3:00 is the time. We're still adjusting times here for the future. Your tour guides are going to include skilled presenters. Is Robert Moore here from Lynn City?
Oh, I hope not.
Robert, would you come forward for a moment?
Well, I rise with some trepidation here. I'm not sure that I should be endorsing this tour, but I think we of Lynn City would prefer the tour start and finish in Lynn City, but it's not going to happen. It'll be here in Oregon City. We would ask all of you if you have the ability to join us on the 14th to do so. I have been requested to allow myself some color, I think, is that the right term, as being one of the guides, and so I would just encourage you to come and participate if you may. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Very much, Colonel.
Primary guides will include Robert Moore, Larry McIntyre, former mayor of Westland, Thelma Hagan-Miller, Raul and Marge Harding, they can't be with us on the 14th, but next spring they will be, myself, and Timothy Miller. Timothy, I'd like to have you step forward for a second. Timothy had to do the research for all the bus evolutions, which is two and a half hours roughly on a bus, stopping at museums, all timed, so it would work, and I drove Timothy crazy. He's here tonight, but he did a wonderful job, and we've been working over and over this route to refine it so it really will work. Your mayor, Dr. John McGlaughlin, excuse me. Doug Neely's going to play Dr. John, and he'll be part of the greeters too. We want to see an assembly of people that would be at the dock or at the Museum of the Oregon Territory or End of the Oregon Trail to greet people and make this a real celebration routinely, not just on October 14th, but for the 10 or so evolutions in 2015. And in the ticket price of $98 per person, there is a stipend there, excuse me, a direct cost that's assessed to each patron to go to the Museum of the Oregon Territory and the End of the Oregon Trail, of which we've included. Our goal is to deliver $20,000 worth of receipts to those two museums if things work well. At least we're bringing paying patrons in the ticket price to those two facilities by bus. Timothy, will you introduce your discovery team?
Yes. Well, I've had the pleasure of being able to train these fine men here in our tours, and we've actually done the route so many times.
We need a mic.
We've actually done the route so many times now that they could probably actually lead the tours themselves by now, but our hope is by the summer of 2015 that they will actually be able to be primary tour guides instead of just assistant tour guides or discovery team. To my left in front, we have Matthew Riggs from Cambie. We have Juan Ventura Gonzalez from Oregon City, and we have Cody Adams, also from Oregon City.
There are also two other guides that are not able to be with us tonight. These are the young people, the first young persons tour guide program that I know of in the state. We're really teaching them the storyline and asking them to act in hospitality mode, and it's happening in your first city.
Yay.
First time.
City of firsts.
We'd like to show you what the video looks like. I guess your monitors are set up for you, and the audience can see. And this is a little bit longer version, which is going to be edited down, but this gives you the, kind of a look at the whole theme of what we wanted to convey to you.
And we like long versions, so.
A quite different strategically important function as well. Here, the monumentally rich agricultural conditions remain violent even today, with lands richening in forest and farm products destined for markets foreign and domestic. Offering a more serene environment, this part of the river is also the choice for recreation.
I apologize. We need to get to the beginning.
Well, the essence of the whole thing is the piece, it needs to be about three to four minutes in length for Dennis to take it to the National Tour Association and Travel West, Canadian Travel Show. I guess we're having a little technical difficulty, so we may not be able to proceed. But one way or the other, we showcase all the features of Oregon City. We take you on an old home tour to show you your primary old homes in your city. We show the downtown district. Jonathan will be on the bus, your downtown manager, to help showcase what's going on in the downtown. We then visit the two museums we talked about. We'll look at other future things in the future. And a lot of it is onboard the vessel, the vessels that we're going to be using in the future here. And Dennis, can you tell us about that for a moment?
Sure. So the cruise is two parts. There's going to be a vessel side and a bus side. The basic concept is that the Willamette Star, which is one of our private yachts, can carry 100 people. In theory, we could depart with 200 people a day, and they would both leave our primary office down by the Omsi area. 100 people going on two motor coaches down McGlaughlin, and the other going on the Willamette Star. On the star portion, you're going to get all of the floating homes, get the history through Milwaukee, Lake Oswego, all the way down into Oregon City, all the way to the falls. We'll turn around, we'll dock. That's where they also have the meal portion of the day. They will then be picked up by the motor coaches and transferred over to the End of the Oregon Trail Museum, where the first group will be done with their shoreside tour and be taken over to the vessel to repeat it. Meanwhile, the motor coach side will be narrating, once they leave the main office, they're narrating all the way down the McGlaughlin Corridor into Oregon City, start out at the Museum of the Oregon Territory. We get shots of the falls, so they can get a photo op as well. Then they do their city tour, all fully narrated, and at the End of Oregon Trail Museum. So it should be a pretty full day. The real importance is that particularly the clientele, we tend to attract a lot of them are regionally specific to this area, and the goal is to bring them back.
Yeah.
You know, the goal is to, you know, senior center comes, and then, you know, they have people visit on the weekend and say, "Where do you want to go?" "Well, I had this great tour, but there's all these things I didn't see yet that they told me about." And we found that to be true with a lot of our other tours over the years, and that's the hope here as well, is to have that one person bring back 10 more.
Perfect.
So the video piece is, the video piece is, works very well at our end. Maybe your end is not working up here tonight. That's okay. We're not going to take any more of your time at all tonight. We'll show you the finished product. your time at all tonight. We'll show you the finished product here after October 14th.
Angie's got it.
After you've talked all about it, we're gonna see it.
Yeah, we want to see it.
To the rushing waters of the Clackamas, to the meandering Toowalatin, the confluence for each stream is the River of Life, the historic Willamette River at the end of the Oregon Trail at Oregon City. Here, Willamette Falls has, for generations, been the focal point for those seeking the river's natural resources and its industrial capacities. Today, the legacy that is offered by the river and by Oregon's first territorial capital, Oregon City, draws visitors upstream from the great city of Portland to observe firsthand the heritage engendered throughout the area. Even as the metropolitan area of Portland has grown up around them, smaller towns and stopovers such as Milwaukee, Oak Grove, and Gladstone retain a sense of the past while building towards their futures. The Portland Spirit Fleet, Blue Star Lines, and the Rivers of Life Center have come together to provide a unique touring experience for visitors and residents alike. From the heart of downtown Portland to docking at the west premier pioneer settlement in Oregon City, passengers get a firsthand view of what was once the hub of commerce in the Oregon Territory, the Willamette River. Along with the sights along the journey, the Portland Spirit offers VIP service, exquisite meals from its executive chef, and an ambiance that is unmatched anywhere. providing open navigation to the Pacific, the river above the falls is providing a quite different strategically important function as well. Here, the monumentally rich agricultural conditions remain vital even today, with lands rich in the forest and farm products Offering a more serene environment, this part of the river is also the choice for recreation many times. The Rivers of Life Center and the Portland Spirit have joined to provide a unique, thoughtful, and uplifting way of uniting past and present at the end of the Oregon Trail. Antiquity is presented through stories, artifacts, the sampling of native foods, pioneer reenactments, and a variety of other ways designed to enhance the experience. All of this is combined with the actual participation on the river that has remained the River of Life for the entire region. As might be expected, especially in regard to its focal point in the Pioneer West, Oregon City has maintained a strong link to the past via its preservation of historic residences, the presence of well-maintained museums, and the vibrant relationship between history In the old territory, churches and their missionaries provided a sense of order, advocated for proper government, and embraced the idea of prosperity and success. From Main Street to Uptown, the city offers a lovely mix of old and new. Visitors often opt for overnight stays to fully take advantage of this gateway to history. As this tourism project has evolved, there has developed a special interest in providing training for young men and women seeking careers in the industry. This is the only such undertaking within the regional tourist industry whereby there is a continuing support for the training of young people in the intricacies of the industry and in their actual participation. Rivers of Life, Blue Star Lines, and the Portland Spirit go hand in hand, not only in name, but also indeed, as they bring new vision to understanding the vital links between our antiquity, our contemporary lives, and the condition of our future.
Again, this will be edited into a much smaller piece, but sometimes for certain community access purposes, this would be excellent too. So that's just kind of a sample for you. Timothy, would you like to conclude here?
Yes, I would just like to actually thank all of you for having us here, and you're all invited to be on that first October 14th cruise. No calls to you as VIP guests, so thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Very nice. That was a nice video. I think that the topic prior to this one, you know, tourism is going to be a big topic in the next few years and in coming years, I think, in Oregon City. So I think to start seeing these partnerships develop and collaborations that we have been working on very strongly with the Oregon City Tourism Council and Oregon City Tourism Coordinating Committee, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So we're going, me and Jerry and a lot of people are going to a lot of tourism meetings to try to bring people into Oregon City. It's really exciting. And I do welcome Robert Moore. I wanted to say that if you don't know the history of Robert Moore and John McGlaughlin, we tend to talk about John McGlaughlin more than we do Robert Moore, but...
It's appropriate.
Right. You know, we do talk about this relationship that these two cities have, and even though these two communities share such an incredible history, there's this ongoing rivalry, and it's kind of great to see the rivalry happen as these partnerships happen too. I mean, it's a really close relationship that these two cities have. And when I do, when I was doing my own research for my own business, to talk about this history, because everyone's always interested in that relationship between the two cities, but what I love to tell, and a lot of people don't know this, is that there was quite a rivalry between McGlaughlin and Robert Moore in building these two communities, and that's really where the rivalry started. And this, you know, competition that they had really between each other, building really the first communities in the state, which is pretty incredible. But then to find out that, you know, they both lived on either side of the river and could see each other's houses from their front windows, and then later to discover that Robert Moore dies September 2nd, 1857, McGlaughlin dies the very next day. I mean, that's an incredible history. It's absolutely amazing. And so these, you know, communities have been tied together from their birth, and I think it's just incredible to kind of see that happening, and I, and to be a part of that ongoing. I think it's really cool. So I appreciate Robert Moore here tonight. That's really cool.
I believe I'm correct in saying that we actually, in our latter days, formed a partnership.
After you, like...
That's right.
So you mean since you've passed on, that you're now...
Now you have a partner.
No, no, actually, we had a partnership on a ferry. We could almost go from my house to his house on a ferry that we both joined the wagon.
This is very, very good. Is October 14th, is that a Saturday?
It's a Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday.
I have to work.
I'll have to see if I can get coverage at work.
Absolutely. You're all welcome. And by the way, the Portland Spirit Organization funded a couple thousand dollars of the economic development study for the Lox, so they've been really great to work with. Out there supporting communities all the time, donating the use of their vessels for the environmental folks in Portland, and it's been a real blessing to work with Dennis.
Yeah, the Explorer jet boat, that's ours, and I'd really love to be able to take that through the Lox. That's kind of my...
Yeah, wouldn't that be cool?
Dennis doesn't know this, but we're planning to use that vessel in February to celebrate Tom McCall's life and legacy in the Oregon City area. He was here doing a lot of things to clean up those mills, along with Nelson Rockefeller. Have you heard that story? We're gonna tell that story. It's a legacy winter tour using that vessel.
Good job. Thank you guys.
Because of the length of time you've taken, we're going to have to actually eliminate one of the items from our agenda, where we're going to possibly make a determination as to what model we were going to use for the building of the new library. I hope you appreciate that.
Jerry, Doug is picking on you, and you're not listening.
Well, I've already done it. You're just gonna have to watch the video of this presentation later on. That's all there is to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you, Jerry. Great training. Great opportunity for you guys.
We will need all the tour guides when they get going, so that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you're messing with the chief of police.
Thank you guys. That's great.
Guys are a great partnership.
Great.
With that, we'll go into citizens' comments. I'm just gonna ask our city recorder if there are any items that involve the library at all.
No, these are just some comments.
Okay. I'm just mentioning, we had originally scheduled for the agenda a decision on what model we would be using for the library building, but we felt we needed a little bit more time working with the communities and so forth, so we'll be seeing that at our next commission meeting. For those of you who came for that event, please come back two weeks from now. With that, we'll go on to our regular agenda as soon as I uncover it. The adoption of the agenda is...
You still have citizen comment.
Citizen comment.
Well, citizen comment. Excuse me. Thank you.
Tom Guy and William.
Tom Guy and William Gifford. Please come forward.
Nope.
And the order, and the order I give it is the order you present.
Whoa.
So...
Hi. I was gonna say pardon my appearance tonight, but these are my work clothes.
I love it.
I just left my Halloween store, and so that's the reason I look this way. I had planned on, those are too hard acts to follow with something serious. I had meant to come in earlier this summer just to make a comment about some things I've noticed lately in the city, and one of those was, I was thinking of how much money this city could make if we had a red light camera, and I hate red light cameras, at the corner of Clackamas River Drive and 213. I cannot believe how many people run that light to try and beat the traffic coming down 213. I don't know how many near misses I've seen down there. It's just, I just, I don't go down there that often, because I have no need to go out that way, but wow, that is a dangerous area for the amount of people that are trying to run the light. That would be a great place to have a policeman sitting there and watching some of those cars coming through there. The other one was, since I've been in my new location down on 7th and Main with my Halloween store, it's been there a couple months now, and I've been amazed at the traffic problems that are coming off the West Lynn Bridge. I mean, I'm hearing road rage of people honking like crazy and swearing at each other, and yes...
It's the Oregon City Bridge, Tom.
Excuse me. What did I say?
No, it's Jerry. It's West Lynn's Bridge.
Yes, these are all people coming for West Lynn.
They are the people that honk.
But yeah, the big thing I wanted to point out was, like a Monday, there was an accident there at that intersection, and there was three Oregon City police cars, there was a fire truck, and some people really shook up and crying. Nothing really major, but as I talked to executive copy printers and other people, they've been watching that for some time. There's people, you can turn left, and executive copies said that you never used to be able to turn left off 7th onto the bridge, but now they are. And so one of the ladies today said that she was walking across the street and watched some cars coming straight, and people coming up 7th to turn onto the bridge left weren't even stopping for the cars coming straight on. They were just turning left, like as if there was a green turn sign there. Same thing coming southbound on 7th. I've watched people trying to turn left there on a 7th and holding up traffic all the way back to 10th when it's really busy in the afternoons. Now, I know I've heard that it's a state highway, and there's not a lot that can be done, but, and I'm sure you're all aware of it. I just thought I'd make a point that, boy, since I've been there, the honking, the squealing of tires, and anybody's taking their life into their own hands coming across any of those intersections walking, because people come off that bridge so fast and take that corner onto 7th, like they gotta get through that light. They may not get through it again until another five minutes or 10 minutes, but it's something that we should watch and maybe have some blinking lights for the left-hand turns, or even stop some of that left-hand turns down there, because it's, something dangerous is gonna happen at some point, and I've been hearing it for the last few months.
Thank you, Tom. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
But I sure liked being down on Main Street and scaring everyone. My store is scary, but the intersection's even scarier.
Ah, there you go. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is William Gifford. Oops, is this on? Oh, you can use mine. Hard to tell. I guess it's on.
Yes, it's on.
Good evening. My name is William Gifford. I live in Oregon City. I might suggest to Mr. Guy, we do have a transportation advisory committee that might take some of those suggestions under advisement and see if we can help find some solutions on that.
Yes, great idea.
You commissioners see me come to a few of these meetings. A few. And the ones that I don't come to, I'm generally watching, but not just these meetings. I watch a lot of other meetings. And the other evening, I was watching the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee meeting, and I have to say, I was really, really, really impressed with the presentation that was given regarding the Pioneer Community Center. And I'm sorry, I don't know the lady's name.
Jamie Davy.
Jamie Davy? Jamie Davy, because Wiseman's out. Well, you know, she's on vacation, and so Jamie Davy gave a really outstanding report on the Pioneer Center and the activities that they perform and the service that they provide to this community. It just amazes me, you know, and in bits and pieces, I knew about all of it, but I would certainly encourage... And in bits and pieces, I knew about all of it, but I would certainly encourage the viewing public to this commission to drop down on the city's website, find the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee meeting from last Thursday, last Thursday night, and just watch that presentation on what all that Pioneer... I mean, this city, and you know I love it, has many jewels in its crowns. I mean, we've got a great, you know, a great and getting better library, or police force, or, you know, all the wonderful things that we have. But that Pioneer Center, I think, is sort of an unpolished gem. And I think more people should be aware of what an enormous value it is to our community. So, just wanted to thank Parks and Rec for putting that presentation on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other citizens' comment, we'll go into our general business. And the first thing before us is the discussion of the...
Did you adopt the agenda?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, we didn't. I apologize. I tried to jump into that, and they wouldn't let me. Yes, adoption of the agenda. Does anyone want to pull anything?
No.
Okay. With that, we'll go ahead and proceed. I have motion to adopt, it won't be necessary really. With that, we'll go on to our general business of the enterprise zone designation, comments by our staff person, our Economic Development Manager, Eric Underwood.
Thank you, Mayor, members of commission. Tonight, there's a request before you to authorize staff to move forward and designate an enterprise zone. The state Economic Development Department has issued a call for applications for the enterprise zone. There are two slots open statewide currently. And just wanted to talk with you a little bit about the enterprise zone, what it entails, and hopefully get authorization to apply. You do have the schedule that would need to occur in front of you, hopefully. The deadline is November 21st. So, the enterprise zone program provides business incentives through property tax abatement for a period of three to five years for all qualified businesses within a particular designated zone. The lifespan of the program is 10 years, is 10 years. It can be up to 11, pending special request. Qualified urban enterprise zone company is eligible to receive property tax abatement on new property only. And so, that's expansion, that's capital, anything of that sort that directly relates to that business. The qualifying company must also maintain 110% of their current average payroll or increase their employment by one throughout that three- to five-year period. The firm must also commit not to diminish employment outside of the zone, so if they have other campuses in the city or in the region, they're not to take their employees from those locations and put them in the enterprise zone location for a period, for purposes of qualification for the enterprise zone and centers. So, the intent of the program is to, not only to facilitate growth of existing companies, but also to attract new companies into the area. The way the enterprise zones are set up right now, currently, there are two out of nine Indian Tribe Zones, 30 out of 36 counties, 11 out of 23 ports, and 117 out of 242 cities. So, that's basically the program. I'm happy to answer any other questions about it that you might have at this point. I will point out that there is a map of the proposed zone. It's one zone, even though it's not contiguous. The first area is 213 area, primarily north of 213, the industrial. Let me step back and say that the enterprise zone is geared only toward industrial companies.
That's good to know.
So, yes, it does not, retail or service industry does not qualify for the incentives. So, it is targeted to family wage jobs and industrial companies. So, these areas that you see are primarily zoned general industrial or campus industrial. So, you have, as I said, the 213 area in the north, and then the southeast, you've got the Red Soils District, along with the Beaver Creek area, where we've compiled two large industrial sites that we will be trying to get developed.
And this area out by 213, this is in the city limits?
Yes, it is. It's all incorporated within the city limits.
That area appears to include Dry Cities Plant, is that right?
It does. That's just an effort to make it a contiguous kind of spot. We didn't want to separate it too much, so, but we also wanted to capture the industrial zoned areas around that area.
So, just for, we're clear, because I know there's been concerns from the citizens about the cove development down there. That is not part of this.
That is definitely not part of this. They wouldn't qualify. They're considered a commercial development.
This is just for industrial.
Right.
They may already have the vertical housing tax credit as their abatement.
I know, but, you know, people get kind of nervous sometimes.
So, I think that, from my opinion, I think this is a great time. I'm glad that the state has called for applications, because in my experience, as of recent, there are two companies here in Oregon City that I will not name that are expanding. And they are looking for ways to finance new capital and expand their business and bring on new payroll. And they're having trouble doing that. And a program such as this would really facilitate that growth.
Yes, absolutely. I agree.
And Eric, just to confirm, two of the commissioners I know were here, the mayor and one commissioner was here years ago before, it was about four years ago now. The county had proposed a big portion of the city be developed into the county's program, and the city declined at that time. This program will be, is not only exclusively for the city, but it will be administered by the city.
It will be exclusively for the city. We'll be in partnership with the county to administer it.
So, the funds go through the county?
No, they do not.
Okay.
So, the county has the staff resources to evaluate the applications in partnership with us.
Okay.
And so, they would recommend designation, and we would bring that and have that approved.
The county's okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
This seems like a great opportunity. So, I'm sure there'll be many other applications, but this would be good for our city for job creation and to get those businesses either expanded and/or more jobs.
Yes, yes.
Do you know what our competition is to...
Do not. I don't know of any other applications that are coming in at this point.
Do you need a cheerleader?
Need as many cheerleaders as I can get, sure.
Go pound on the doors?
Yeah.
And who approves this?
The state does.
ODOT?
No, the state Business Department, the Business and Economic Development Department for the state. And they should have that approved by March of next year.
And this is only tonight, you're only approving our application?
Right.
Yeah. I've got a question. Am I right, this does not include the concept area land?
No, it does not. It's only land already incorporated.
And I presume that we have to do that simply because we're making the applications to city, and we only can do it within the city boundary?
Correct.
Okay.
I, oh, is that all the discussion?
No, not necessarily.
Oh, okay.
You want to speak?
I was just going to make a motion.
Oh, no, go ahead.
But if anybody has anything else?
Well, I have Williams's.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
What's the procedure? Does there's a comment before the motion?
Go ahead.
During the discussion?
Excuse me. My name is William Gifford, and I live in Oregon City. Wow, thanks very much, Eric, for getting us on board. A couple of questions came up just listening to this presentation. One said, the county, we would be working in concert with the county, and somebody said, will the county be doing something with the money? And you said, no. And my question is, what money?
It'd be the, it was just, it's a tax abatement program.
Yeah.
And so, you know, we've notified, we will notify all the taxing authorities to let them know that they will be abating taxes on a qualified business for up to three to five years. They could be. There's really no money that would be passing through. There's no money to administer this. The county has just volunteered their time, since they do have the resources to take in the applications and help us evaluate them. And they're also helping us with the application piece as well.
Second question is, what about businesses that are already in the zone that are non-industrial? Are there any?
Yes, there are. The Hilltop Mall is within the map there. They would not qualify for any enterprise zone projects because they're commercial-related.
This doesn't preclude the development of non-industrial businesses within that zone, does it?
No, it does not preclude any development, yes. So, they would have...
That's what I want to make sure.
Well, they would not qualify for the tax abatement, correct, if they're not industrial.
So, this is win-win for us in the fact that it's really not costing anything, well, there's the tax abatement. And how long is that abatement?
It's three to five years.
Who chooses that?
Well, it's normally three years, but we can grant an extension. We would bring that back here.
I prefer my staff dialogue with the commission, and you guys do that way.
So, my question is, are there any downsides to it? And it sounds like it's win-win, because it doesn't preclude us from doing non-industrial, it encourages development, and what I like about it is that it's a short window. It's not like an urban renewal that's going to be going on. You've got a three to five, you know, and...
Thirty.
What's that?
Thirty.
Yeah, three, five, thirty. Or thirty-two is the case, maybe. No, so, yeah, it sounds like a really win-win situation. I just hadn't heard all of the details on that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just see it as another tool and an opportunity to really get some jobs created.
Mayor, I wanted to say that one of the things that I think is unique about what Eric has put together here, enterprise zones are not unique, and I've been involved in the creation of them in other cities in Oregon where I've worked. What's interesting about this one is we have, we have actual live businesses at the table that want to benefit from the program.
Yeah.
You know, so many cities, we create these different things, and then we lay a foundation, and then we sit back, and we hope and pray, and hope that the rain comes and the crops grow. And in this case, we've got real beneficiaries waiting to benefit from the program. So, I want to thank you, Eric, for staying in touch with our business strategy and pushing that.
I have one other thing to say, too. I think that this is really important, because these companies that want to grow, if we don't have the opportunity for them, they could go somewhere else.
Yep.
So, I think it's very important for retention and also job growth.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Move to approve 14-538 enterprise zone designation.
I second that. Thank you, Rocky.
Seconded by Commissioner Pauli, who wanted to make the motion from my throat there, but that's all right. Any case, one place. And it was unanimous pass. We did receive one letter that came in, and I don't know if that becomes part of the record or not. You might send it over. I think you got copied on it.
I did, yes.
And has it been sent over to Nancy Idris?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I could send that to her right now.
Very good. And the thing is, I'm sure like anything else, that there are probably enterprise zones that have not necessarily worked that well, and others that have, just like urban renewal districts and so forth. So, you can always probably come up with a negative example as well as positive examples.
True. And I would like to point out, too, that each, pretty much every enterprise zone in each state is different. They operate different. As California, their enterprise zones incorporate commercial businesses, retail, and they're not set up the same way. And I don't think all of them are in California and necessarily tied to jobs.
Right.
So, you know, it just depends on the state, really, on how it's administered.
Depends upon how it's set up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much. We'll go on to our second reading of ordinance 14-1012, an ordinance adopting an update of the Oregon City's sanitary sewer plan. And that'll go, of course, to Tony Cockle.
So, thank you, Mayor. Evening, commissioners. At our last meeting, we reviewed the sanitary sewer master plan, and the first reading of the proposed ordinance was read. We are requesting a second reading of the ordinance for adoption. Be happy to answer any questions, if any have come up since our last meeting.
Do I hear any questions?
No questions.
Do I hear a motion for a second reading?
Final adoption.
And final adoption.
Move to approve 14-542, second reading and final adoption of ordinance number 14-1012.
First reading, please. Oh, second? Who's seconded?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Smith. Reading, please.
This is ordinance number 14-1012, an ordinance of the City of Oregon City adopting an update to the Oregon City Sanitary Sewer Master Plan, an ancillary document to the Oregon City Comprehensive Plan.
All those in favor? Or opposed? Unanimous vote? Thank you. We'll go on. There is a motion to refer to the consent agenda?
Move to approve consent agenda. Second.
Vote, please. There was unanimous vote as well. Communications, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Actually, could I just make one comment? Chief Ben, would you explain to our viewing audience, there was a lot of liquor applications, so, does, do we have an opportunity to say no to liquor license in our city?
It doesn't really do us any good, no. No, the OLCC does not.
I just wanted for our viewing audience to know, because there was a few on here, that the liquor commission are the ones that actually are in control of that.
Yes.
Yes.
If we say no, and we had, if there's a glaring example...
Yes.
And of a problem, we would raise an issue with OLCC. If there is, if there is a denial on us, basically what they do is put them on super-secret probation. Keep their eye on them.
Well, I'm excited, because we have one that's been approved in the audience, so, I'm excited about that.
Some new businesses.
New business.
Good stuff.
Sorry, now, city manager, sorry.
No worries. So, as you know, we are in litigation with Clackamas County, so I'm not going to talk about any of our litigation strategy or any executive session materials. However, I wanted to let you know that their county council, Stephen Madcor, has invited Nancy Warner to, I think somewhat presumptuously suggested that he's talked to a judge, and he wants the judge to mediate. And so, our response has been, well, I think the attorneys need to talk together about that and report back to their clients at some point if there is something to mediate other than the city commission mediating away its home rule authority. No portion of which I'm under the impression you want to mediate away. So, the attorneys are exploring that, and they're having conversations about it. And if there's some, something meritorious that comes forward in those discussions, the attorney will be reporting that back to you, and that will be in executive session. So, that has occurred just today. Also, Scott Archer has some updates on the Erma Tinger House getting closer, and something about the windows project at the pool.
Oh, yeah. It looks really nice.
Hello, commissioners. Just a couple of updates. First of all, the Erma Tinger House, the project is moving along, and it's going well. We've had just a couple of delays on that in terms of some additional items that we had to research a bit. The main thing, though, is you've, as you've known, the house has been raised up and basically up on blocks, if you will, for a few weeks, and that's to do the excavation work and the, pouring the new footings and foundations and so forth. We are very close to putting the house back down, so everybody can stop worrying if it's going to tip over.
Gently.
Yeah, very carefully. So, probably within the next week or so, you'll see, you'll notice that the house is going to be put back on. We do have the, the foundation is being completed and all that work that was necessary underneath the house. So, that part is, though it'll be put back down, there's still plenty of work to be done yet. But the project is going quite well. And then the second thing is that I just passed out some photos of before and after.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
They're amazing.
I had a question about the Erma Tinger House before.
Sure, thank you.
Um, one of the questions I have, I guess I could just some, I, I can chat with you offline, too, but one of the questions I have is, um, prob, might be Christina's question, too, um, which is the date of the house, and, um, when the house is done, um, and we have some sort of opening event, I'm, I'm wondering about the process of, um, how we change the date on the house, because I think there's some, there's some evidence that the house predates the date that is on the National Register, Register at this point, and I don't know what the full process is to, to do that, but I don't, I want to start thinking about that, because if it's a long process, um, I think we want to know when we can get that, if we can get that done.
Sure.
And what that takes, I, I'm not really sure, but-
Yeah, great question, and, and, uh, good, good point. We can, uh, I think begin looking into that. I'll, I'll talk to Christina. I suppose there's some formal process to go back to-
I'm sure.
And Commissioner Smith, to be sure, the year, your belief is eighteen?
Well, we have, um, the Hardings did some research, we showed them some research. We found, we found a diary entry that refers to repairs being made on the house in eighteen forty-three. So, I mean, when you have dates like that, it's hard to know for sure, but, but I think we all pretty much, based on that, we think it's at least predates forty-five. So, anyway.
Since the Hudson's Bay, uh, structure, and since Hudson's Bay was actually in the process of leaving the area at that time, I would be surprised if they had invested in construction.
Right.
Staff can communicate with the Hardings and others, and I think, uh, community services can work together with community development, uh, staff to run that down, and if there's a correction we need to make, we can apply for that.
Right.
Scott, I, I'd like some, um, to refresh my memory, there are internal changes that are being made as well, if I'm not mistaken. I recall they felt the stairway had been moved from its original position, and the intent was to actually take it to as close as we can determine the original, uh, structure of the house, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Very good.
So the second thing I had, were there any other questions about Erma Tinger?
No.
Thank you. Uh, the second thing was just, uh, um, a quick, uh, update on our, our windows project at the pool. I just passed around some, uh, photos, or before and after of both the interior and exterior, and so, um, as you may or may not know, over the annual shutdown period, which we, we do about a, close to a three-week period, shut down at the end of the summer and before our fall opens, and we, so we've just reopened not, not that long ago. Uh, the big project this year, we, we take on kind of one big project and a whole bunch of smaller projects every year, uh, but the really big one this year was the replacement of, uh, what's called the curtain wall window system, which is basically the big wall of windows on the south side that you see from twelfth. Um, and, uh, the old system wasn't much, uh, in need of replacement, uh, and we had, uh, been looking at doing this and getting it budgeted for quite a while. We had unsafe windows, you know, if the winds got high, and, uh, they're very inefficient for energy usage and so forth, so we, we were able to replace those old, uh, windows with, with a new, um, window system, which is much more energy efficient, safe, and they look great. Um, I think that's what the pictures are for, it just kind of show you that, that not only are they very functional, there's a very functional purpose, but, um, I think it just looks both on the inside and outside a lot better.
This is so amazing. I am so excited about this. Um, it's, this is a mid-century building? When was it built?
Sixty-five is when it was opened.
Right, okay, so mid-century, and so the new windows really accentuate the mid-century design, because those white panes before really chopped it up.
Yeah.
And then it got, so I spent a lot of time with the pool, you can tell, but, but it gets so hot inside, so the windows are tinted.
They are.
There's, there's U V protection there, so it might not get as hot.
Maybe not as hot, it's, so you know how pools are, they're always going to be a bit muggy and warm, but yeah, that's part of the idea, is they, it's, they, they should be, provide better sun blockage.
I, I think it makes the building look much more modern, really good, and I noticed, too, that you put a bench inside by the waiting pool, and I wish that was there when I watched my father, I was paying all the payments, my father was complaining about waiting pool.
Better late than never, right?
Yes, no, somebody will-
About ten years late on that one.
That's great, so wonderful job.
Well, we, we, thank you, we, we appreciate that. We have got some great staff, um, our facility staff and our, our pool staff and everybody, um, and, but, but thank you to the commission and to the budget committee for supporting, over the last several years, the investment in bringing this facility along, because as, as you asked, Commissioner, uh, it's, it's an old building, and we have dramatically, uh, extended the life of that facility. It was getting to the point where we were going to have to, you know, kind of think about whether it was even had a useful life or whatever, and, and the investments that we've made the last several budget cycles have been, um, have been very, very helpful and very significant, and as I think you all well know, it's, it's a very well utilized facility, and it's important to our community, so thank you.
If I might take a moment, uh, since people are complaining about the mugginess of a swimming pool, uh, the, the Liderite Park was originally a swimming pool, it was donated by the Liderite family, uh, they lost their son, I believe, one of the rivers, I don't know if it's Clarkamas or Homewood, or, but they donated that property for, uh, outdoor swimming pools, uh, spring-fed, and if you're objecting to the mugginess, I'm sure we could run spring water into the, into the pool instead of the warm water, and I'm sure it wouldn't be nowhere near as muggy. You might want to give that some thought, if you get too many complaints about that.
I'd prefer to keep the indoor facility.
Okay, still moving along in my reports. Uh, Maureen is going to come forward, and just to make a community announcement about the status of the library project, we're going to have another joint meeting so that we can have yet another opportunity for the public to participate in the process.
We like the opportunity for public to participate.
Very important.
Good evening, commission. So I just want to update you as to a little bit more detail as to why we pulled the agenda item tonight, and last week we met with Historic Review Board and also with the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, and both those meetings were very, very good, and we got a lot of good feedback from each of them, but, um, one of the comments at the, at the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee meeting was that, um, they would like to make, have time to make a recommendation to you, and so what we decided to do was have a joint meeting of the Library Board and, um, Parks and Rec Advisory Committee at the regular Library Board meeting, which is next Wednesday. So, we'll have our business meeting, the plan is to have our business meeting, first the Library Board regular meeting, and then at six, the, all the Prac members will join us, and, um, most of them have already RSVP'd that they can make it, so we got a quorum and everything else, and then we'll have a presentation from the architects, so that we, so that those, um, members have time to reflect a little bit more about the park issues, because they feel like that's their job to comment to you on that, and they wanted to have an opportunity to do it, so we wanted to make that opportunity for them.
Yeah.
And it gives everybody else a couple more weeks. We'll be, um, going back to McLaughlin Neighborhood Association tomorrow night as well, so that gives them a little bit more time to prepare whatever they want to get to you as well. So, you'll see us on the fifteenth.
I think you've been already looking at that. One thing that did not come up at our, when we selected the two options, and we understood a certain option was coming back to us from the, from the Library Board, was, uh, relative cost of those two options, and I understand that you'll be, you'll be talking about that when you come back to us as well.
Yeah, we can talk about that when we come back on the fifteenth, and we'll bring back the information of the study, the, um, further studies that you asked us to do on each of the options, as well as anything that has been completed since we talked to you, including, like, geotechnical information, which is very interesting. Yeah.
We will stay tuned for that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And, uh, Jim Leffler's probably not going to brag very much about this, but I am going to brag a little bit about it, because he and our department heads, and also all of our frontline staff throughout this organization in the last four or five years have really, uh, transformed the city's workers' comp expenses and the risk and injuries and, uh, claims that we've had and experienced here at Oregon City. It's just been, I, I knew we could do better when I got here, I just didn't realize that we could do this much better. So Jim, can you come forward?
Give us the good news.
Thank you, David. Good evening, commission. Uh, yes, good news for insurance, for a change. Um, you know, with health insurance and PERS being the primary expenses for personnel costs, uh, workers' comp costs are, are a part of it, but they're not as big, but, uh, we have good news for the, uh, I guess it's the third year in a row. We've been with SAFE since twenty-eleven, and each year, well, there was a minor hiccup, it went up two thousand dollars in twenty-twelve, but since then, uh, from twenty-twelve to twenty-thirteen, our rates dropped seven percent, and for this year, they've dropped another five percent. Excuse me.
Wow.
In, in addition to that, we've received dividends from SAFE. Um, in twenty-twelve, we received a dividend of seventy-three thousand five hundred, so it effectively took, um, almost, almost two-thirds off the cost of the insurance for that year. And then in twenty-thirteen, it, we dropped, had a dividend of sixty thousand five hundred, so that's, uh, that was also about another, you know, a quarter, and then, uh, in twenty-fourteen, we anticipate another dividend somewhere between sixty and sixty-five thousand dollars. So, you know, our, our rates dropped from a hundred and eighty thousand last year to a hundred and seventy-seven this year, so we're, we're, you know, again, we're proactive, um, we're, have a, a good safety committee, we, we aggressively manage the workers' comp claims, and, uh, that's good news for, for all staff and everybody.
We have good staff, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, Eric is going to give us a, a short description of what he's going to be doing this Saturday at the Biz Fest, Harvest Fest.
Yes, so, and I wanted to encourage all of you all to come down, too, this Saturday. Uh, on October fourth, ten a.m. to three p.m., uh, there's going to be the Oregon City Biz Fair and Harvest Fest. Um, there will be, it's going to be at the end of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center, and there's going to be a pancake breakfast, a pumpkin launch, scavenger hunt, kids' zone, live entertainment, dancing horses, museum entry included, prize drawing hourly, and much, much more, and they said the kids' zone is going to have hands-on farm fun.
Woo-hoo.
So, um, but, uh, I will be there. If you come in, uh, early enough, I'll be serving you breakfast, so.
So again, October fourth, or the-
Well, it's Saturday.
Yes, yeah, so-
Saturday.
This Saturday, from ten a.m. to three p.m. The pancake breakfast starts at nine, it goes to eleven.
So if we come at eight, we might be glad to do some work.
End of the Oregon Trail. The Biz Fest.
Yeah, of course, I'll be there.
No.
Thank you, Eric, and I regret that I won't be there. My wife has reminded me I have a obligation on the Oregon coast, so I won't be there, but Eric will be there throwing food or cooking food.
Or a sausage.
Yes, whatever, he's slinging hash.
That's right.
Um, so, um, also, we do not have any, uh, items ready for the October seventh work session, so we wanted to announce the cancellation of the work session on October seventh.
Oh.
That, that coincides, I think, for some elected officials with, uh, a rather active month leading up to the regular elections, so maybe that will be a welcome change, but we don't have anything for October seventh, but we have lots to do, but nothing for the work session, right? Nancy?
And wanted to just add on to that, to add on to that, um, the November work session, it falls on Veterans Day, uh, which is November eleventh, and we will need to, uh, according to our charter, when the meeting falls on a holiday, that we go to the next day, which makes it Wednesday, February, oh, February, um, November twelfth. So, that's the date of the November work session, and I'll send that to you in an email as well, but I wanted to, uh, make sure it got out to the public as well.
Perfect. And then, uh, we will have some, um, adjustments to the calendar, because that's also the night
of the Library Board and, and Natural Resources Committee, so we have to work on those details.
Yes, and that's also the night that, uh, IMPAC has its meeting.
Oh, it is.
From five to seven, and so, um, if it's scheduled after seven, maybe seven-thirty, I would be able to make it, but.
Work on that. That's all we have tonight for reports.
So, October seventh was canceled, and-
Canceled, and November eleventh moved to twelfth.
November eleventh moved to twelfth, okay.
I'll put all that in an email to you also.
Thank you.
And, treasure, is that it then?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Um, the only thing that I really have before me, there'd be something else to be reported on, but I think, uh, I think, uh, Commissioner, um, because she was the lead person, I think, uh, Commissioner Polly will be speaking to it. Um, we have vacancies coming up next year. Um, we actually have a current vacancy on the Budget Committee, but it, I think we'll let that fall into the next year, because there will be no Budget Committee meetings, uh, in the rest of this year in any case. Uh, we have one current, uh, vacancy on the Natural Resource Committee, um, the, and, but we have then, besides those vacancies, we have several openings. Uh, Budget Committee has one regular opening in addition to the, uh, current vacancy, two openings on the Oregon City Civic Improvement Trust, three openings on Historic Review Board, two openings on the Library Board, one opening on the Metro Enhancement Committee, three openings in addition to the current, uh, vacancy on the Natural Resource Committee, Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, three openings, Planning Commission, four openings, Transportation Advisory Committee, three openings, Urban Renewal Budget Committee, one opening. Uh, it's likely that some of the current member, members for, for those positions might reapply, but those are open positions in any case, and I don't know what the, the philosophy of the next mayor might be, so I can't comment on how those would be filled, but in any case, uh, we, we have those, we have almost all those committees having staggered, uh, uh, terms, and so we always have openings coming into those particular, um, uh, meetings. With that, I'll, uh, go to, start on my left, Commissioner Polly.
There are so many things, I don't know where to start.
The top.
The top, start at the top, okay. Uh, last night at the Ainsworth House was the Willamette Falls Legacy Friends Group kickoff, so talking about forming a, um, a friends group to kind of let everybody know what's going on, um, with the legacy project, the public space, and also to develop advocacy for it. So, it was great, it was a great turnout. A lot of people from a lot of different walks of life and experience levels and skill sets, so that was great to see. Um, Ellen, Ellen Wyoming, um, did the, um, structure of the event, and there were speakers from Mount Tiber Friends Group. They talked a little bit about their experience and how that worked, and then also, um, which cemetery was it?
Lone Oak.
The Lone, yes, thank you, um, from that cemetery, and talked about their experience and the formation and about setting goals and, um, just how that's going to work. So, in the next month or two, there'll be another meeting, and I will let you know what happens with that. So Betty was there, too, and Doug was there, and it was a, it was a great turnout. Um, I went to the League of Oregon Cities, um, conference, and I went to many, many, um, programs, and my head is filled with information, so, but it's, it's great, and on their website are all the PowerPoints, so anybody can go on and see that information as well, so even if you weren't there, you can, um, you can look vicariously through me.
I love it.
Watch, get the information, so that was great. We did go to the P G E, uh, dinner there, Mayor Neely and myself, and it was very interesting. They talked about the Sustainable Cities Initiative, and it's led by the U of O students, and it's, it's a great opportunity. I would definitely like to look into that, maybe we could have a work session around that, um, but that, that's a wonderful opportunity, um, to have students, um, basically give us, you know, free labor and their ideas, and, oh, it's not, okay.
It's not free.
Okay.
It's not free.
But it's much less than it would be to-
It depends.
Okay. Well, we could look into that, but it was interesting to see what has been done with that program, um, the partnership with that college. And, I will stop at that.
Just might add, uh, I didn't go to the, one of the meetings she did, but it had to do with the, uh, I believe you went to it, it had to do with the right-of-way issues, and our own, uh-
Yes.
Our own right-of-way manager there made the presentation, and I understand did a very good job. I wasn't at the meeting.
I, I was there, you did a great job.
So.
Been inundated with inquiries from other cities that want to learn how we're doing that, yeah?
Very good. Commissioner Maureen?
Um, the only thing I have is, this morning was Good Morning Oregon City, um, that the Oregon City Chamber puts together. There must have been probably eighty different businesses there, and, um, Mr. Eric Underwood made a comment, um, that was a great reminder of urban renewal and how it is used for our businesses, and that I encourage you to do every time you have that opportunity with us, because that is very important for us to know how you can use urban renewal for good.
And, and can you kind of restate that comment, since I was a working stiff at that time?
Yeah, me too.
I was unable to attend.
Well, let's see, uh, let me go back that far. Um, no, I was just, I was just saying that, um, you know, in the capacity of the Economic Development Manager for the city, I also manage the Urban Renewal District, and, um, this is, uh, before Nebiolo moved in, uh, the Bushes applied, uh, this is an example of one of our grant programs, so the Bushes applied for the Adaptive Rehab Reuse Grant, um, and created this space for Nebiolo to be able to move in and create the jobs, and, and, uh, I said, this is just a prime example of-
And I said, this is just a prime example of a public-private partnership and how urban renewal works.
Yes. It was great.
That's great. It really helps initiate that change that might not have happened anyway, and take that extra risk and.
Right, right.
It's just really good for us, even as commissioners, to be reminded of how important these items are that we have. And we don't do a good job of tooting our own horns about that kind of project.
So that's my only comment.
It was a rather disappointing chamber event. Somebody pointed out that I had only three months to go, and several people clapped. But anyway.
I think there was only one person that clapped. I don't think it was several.
To go like, oh. Not to put a broad statement, I mean.
You took it the wrong way.
He only, he only has three months left.
I know, before we do surgery.
Yes. Mr. Commissioner.
Oh, I don't have anything.
Amazing.
I, I, I mean, I've gone, been going to a lot of tourism meetings, and I'll kind of save some of those reports for later, because there's a lot of ongoing discussions about some ideas, and I'll bring those forward at some point.
Anything else for the good order?